In person and remote. Using the Zoom platform as a hybrid meeting, all votes by members of the board will be preceded by each stating their name. The meeting is hereby called to order. We'll begin with a quick roll call of the members. Ron O'Connor, Chair.
Anne Meitzon, Trustee.
Rita Rougeau, Trustee.
Quorum of the trustees is present, so we will proceed with the meeting. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance first.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America.
The first item on the agenda is the December 6, 2022, meeting minutes for approval. Everybody had a chance to review these?
Yes.
Thank you, Jocelyn, for putting them together. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Reader Rougeau, I make a motion, we accept the minutes.
You have a second?
I was not present.
You're not present. I'll step down as chair and second the motion to approve the December 6 minutes. Is there any discussion or comments on the on the minutes?
Yeah, I saw.
Right, then we'll vote. All in favor say aye. Ron O'Connor, aye.
Reader Rougeau, aye.
Motion passes, minutes are approved. Okay, I've got some opening remarks to introduce the public comment section of the of today's meeting. The Dyton Public Library Board of Trustees recently received concerns from members of the community related to its library collection development policy. Trustees review our policies on a regular basis to ensure they are current. Our agenda today includes a discussion of the collection development policy, which was last updated in January of 2022. The trustees typically do not have residents attend its meetings to comment on its mission, policies, and operations. We do not have a formal policy on public comment. We will discuss the draft public comment policy during this meeting. The Chair has statutory discretion with regards to the parameters for public comment. We'll be modeling our approach after that of public bodies and other municipalities. We'll open our meeting with public comment subject to the parameters provided on the agenda as follows. Per Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, Subsection G, and Open Meeting Law, Guidance 2013-64, the Chair is able to define parameters of public comment. Comments are limited for this meeting to two minutes. Time may not be given to another speaker. Comments must address agenda items, or they could be related to any topic under the Board of Trustees jurisdiction. In addition, I note the following elements of the draft public comment policy that will govern the comments that we receive today. At the beginning of the public comment period, the Chair may request a show of hands in the room and by remote participants to estimate the number of residents who intend to speak. Public comment period will conclude when all persons who wish to comment have had one opportunity to speak. The Chair will call on residents who wish to provide public comment or may request that they form a line at a podium or other location designated by the Chair. Speakers will identify themselves by their full name and address at the beginning of their remarks. Speakers are required to keep their remarks to no more than two minutes in a single speaking opportunity. Speakers may not divide their time between speaking opportunities. Unused time for one speaker may not be granted to another speaker. Speakers will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual member. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. Speakers must be respectful and constructive in their remarks and will refrain from personal attacks and the use of profanity. Speakers who have prepared written remarks or supporting documents are encouraged to leave copies of such remarks and documents with the Chair at the meeting so they can be entered into the record of the meeting. So what I just gave you is what we're going to be discussing later as a board. But those are with my discretion as Chair that will be enforced for this meeting. So please note that this is the only opportunity for public comments at this meeting. It's here at the beginning of the meeting. There won't be one later. I ask that people who wish to offer comments to form a line at the podium or use the raise hand function in Zoom. You can do that on Zoom in a couple of ways. Quick shorthand ways of doing it is to use Alt-Y on a Windows machine or Option-Y on a Mac. So let's say speakers first by the order in the line, then on Zoom. Public comment will again close when every person wishes to speak has one and only one opportunity to speak. So with that, show of head, who wants to speak and then just give us an idea. You have one?
I will speak.
And one on Zoom? So if not with the room, I would just like form a line, that that would probably be the best way of doing it. If that's okay with folks? Good afternoon. We're just starting the public commentary. Folks who have public comments are being asked to form a line over here and we'll just take you in the order in what you're. Is it okay to begin? Please go ahead. Thank you. We're going to put people on a timer, just to be fair, everybody else in the minute.
Good evening. My name is Paul Reynolds and I live at 725 Main Street. My family and I are proud, grateful, regular utilizers of library services. My three kids have grown up in the library, attending Storytime, Whoopee Night, Arts and Crafts, and everything in between. The youth librarians Lori and Phyllis are more familiar to my kids than some of our own relatives. And I want to publicly commend them for the contributions that they regularly make to the life of my family and I'm sure many others. Now, I understand the unfortunate necessity of closing the Carnegie Library. I understand this has led to some storage and consolidation of staff, resources, and book collections that was not ideal. And I look forward to the day that the library is able to stretch its legs, so to speak, in its beautiful new location. And when those space constraints are alleviated and book collections are able to be properly dispersed, it is my hope that there will be a separation of books intended for teenagers and young adults from those in the young children's section. I understand that there are books dealing with all topics, including sexuality and sexual identity in the library. And I have absolutely no issues whatsoever with the library carrying a wide and diverse selection of titles. Diversity is a good thing. That said, I'm sure that the teens and young adults who wish to check these titles out feel demeaned if they were required to sift through the Three Little Pigs and the Gingerbread Man in order to find them. Similarly, as a parent of young children, it's my hope that when storage limitations allow, the discretion will be exercised so the books are merchandised in a way that books dealing with themes of sexuality will not be dispersed among the youth collection. What I would be delighted to hear this evening would be a commitment from the trustees to ensure that its broad and diverse collection of titles, while inclusive and accessible, will be merchandised and marketed in a tactful way that allows parents of young children to freely browse the section specifically for them without more grown-up themes encroaching on the brief and fleeting magic of childhood. With respect and appreciation, libraries and valuable contributions to our community, I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Go next.
Andrew Horton, 428 School Lane in Dayton. First, I just want to thank you to you for being trustees. And I know it's a lot of work and you have to listen to a lot of people and not everybody is happy at the end of the day with the decision you make, but I'm just asking for a concerned resident. I've grown up in Dayton my entire life, used to go to the library, I used to get yelled at by Mrs. Pilling all the time way back when. But I learned a lot going to the library as a kid, good and bad. Just, I sent in an email. I directed it, I believe, to the library trustee, I'm sorry, director. Because I didn't have information on from the town for the trustees, and I know that that's being addressed and thank you for that, because I think you should be open to get emails from town residents being elected or appointed to a board. So thank you for for doing that. Basically, I don't, my children, they're gone through school already, they're all adults. I have grandchildren that live in town and I'm just trying to do whatever I can to protect them as well. And I would just hope that the policies in Dayton, as Paul said, just to separate literature. I'm not asking for banning of books, like I said in in the email that I sent. Just that it's segregated, that very young children can't take books out or access things online through the Dayton Public Library. That really is going to confuse them. I think as parents, grandparents, today, we try and shield our kids from so much. Young, very young children, they get confused very easily. And that's what I would like to see the policies of the Dayton Public Library. I attended the meeting the other night as well for the new library and saw some of the plans from the Ockcheck. It looked gorgeous. And I really want to support that going forward. And Dayton having a library that not only Dayton, but area residents can also enjoy. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello there. My name is Jessica Bierman. I am a resident in Dayton and a parent of three children. Thanks for having this public forum. I know it's new and different, and I appreciate that you're listening to everyone here tonight. I am an educator. It's been 20 years that I have been teaching. In the last six years, I've been working with new teachers in a mentor role. I also am a reading tutor, so books are life for me. And I just want everyone to hear that all children's books are princess and prince, right? So when my children were little, I said, Miss Lori, can we maybe limit it to, you know, just one princess book? So my daughters don't grow up and learn they need to be rescued from their lives by some dusty old prince, right? So I was there and active and with my children. Children become readers on the lapses of their parents. And so parents really do play a huge role in helping children gather their reading materials. This is not just books, but things online. So I think if people are really, really worried about what's available at the library, they should also make sure they're monitoring phones, iPads, all of that kind of information. I do not see a reason for a policy. The children right now are not going to see a reason for a policy. There is 0% reason to worry about signing out books or separating them. I know it's very, very organized. The young children's books are in one place, older children's books are in another. I am an ally. I will always be one, and I find this to be quite othering and really disturbing. So my hope is that we're not going to change the way things are going. Children do not deserve to be politicized. Thank you.
Yeah, all right. Who's who would like to go next? No, I think I forget.
I'm Pat Gales and I live at 825 Whitmarsh Lane.
I too grew up in Dayton.
And Dayton was always, we were always at the library. My concern tonight is that in restricting books that only the only people that have the choice in what kinds of books their children read are the families. Each family has the right to determine which library resources are acceptable for their children. And that if you start with one topic of books, what is the next topic? So I just think you have to be very careful. I think the decision belongs with families and parental controls. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tom Galucci, 2086 Palmer Street. I did not grow up in Dayton. I grew up in the next town over Swansea, but I spent a lot of time in the library. One of the things that I want people to understand is I don't want to see any sort of book banning, book burning, or anything like that. I absolutely am an absolutist when it comes to the First Amendment. You know, I think people should have the right to look at whatever they want to look at. That being said, I think that the mixture of certain titles and some of the titles that we've seen highlighted had us very disturbed. You had explained, actually, I think it was Ms. Tauras explained that some of the titles that we saw were actually presented by a banned books club. Correct? And that's fine. I think that's actually kind of cool, but it was being presented in the youth services room, which I kind of had a problem with, but I understand you have space limitations right now. What I would, what I would ideally like to see is the policy as we've presented it to you, not necessarily the policy which would show both sides of the political spectrum. Maybe the idea that minors couldn't access that material by themselves, maybe with a parent. You know, if the parent chooses to present that, that's fine. But we also do have we do have some serious concerns about that. And there are certainly a lot of us here tonight as well from both sides of the spectrum, as I can say. But I don't want to see law enforcement characterized as criminals in these books. What I've seen a lot of is books from one side of the political spectrum. I'd like to see both sides. And that's really all I have to say right now. Thank you.
Anybody else in the room like to speak?
Joanne Peterson, 3091 Hunter Hill Drive. I'm a recent person who's moved to Dayton in the last four years. I raised my daughter in Connecticut. I have grandchildren and their parents who are here, and that's why we moved here. I would like to see the library open to everybody. And there are some books that I may not want to read. There are other books that I devour. I think that the control of some of these books belongs in the parent's hand, not in the library's hands. If the parents take responsibility for their child coming to the library, and most of them start when they're very young, and they grow up learning that the library is everything. And if there are any people who want to find out more information, they go to the internet because it's so easy for all of us now. You can access whatever information you're looking for. But again, I'd like to say that the parents need to step up and come to the library with your children and see what the library has to offer. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room? And folks on Zoom, we'll get to you once we finish in the room.
My name is Lauren Peterson. I'm from 1525 Cedar Street. A library is defined as a place in which literary, musical, artistic, or reference material, such as books, manuscripts, recordings, or films are kept. I have two children, both eight and 11, and we frequent the library and we use their resources on a regular basis. I do believe that this decision should be in control of the parents. We should be supervising our children, just like on the internet. Do we allow them to have free rein? Like, it's our job as a parent to be supervising the materials which we feel our children are exposed to. And we all have materials or topics that make us uncomfortable or which we would rather not read. Perhaps we need to get comfortable being uncomfortable and use the uncomfortable moments as teachable moments to help us gain understanding and become better human beings. We could also simply just choose not to read that book that we find offensive. I do not condone murder, and I greatly dislike the act of cooking. But I do not wish for all cookbooks and murder mysteries to be banned from the local library. The library is a place for all members of the community to gather, read, learn, and grow. If we eliminated every book that someone was uncomfortable with, there wouldn't be any books left on our shelves. We have the individual power to control what books enter our private libraries. But this is not the case with the public library. And if it were to be doing so for our children and our community, it would be a great disservice.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
Phil Moore, 1835 Smith Street. I'm actually not hearing a lot of disagreement here. Those of us that are looking to make some changes, what we're asking for is nobody here, I've not heard a single person say we want to ban the book or remove a single book for the library or restrict a single person's access to a book. What we're asking for is that there are certain subjects, mostly those that belong to the sexual or the political arena that we'd rather not have openly promoted at the library, especially since it's could be from a singual point of view, and it doesn't match the values of many of the parents within our community. I completely agree with what some of the other speakers said, that parents need to be more involved. Absolutely. But we need to give parents that opportunity and not be giving things that parents would not wish their children to read to children behind their back. And I think that's what our fundamental concern is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? We'll, we'll come back to the room just in case there's anybody who chooses to do that. So we'll, we'll go to Zoom.
Okay, I guess I'm Zoom. Hi, everybody. I'm Bill Mello, 1693 Wellington Street. Several of us had an opportunity to meet with Ron and Jocelyn and have a discussion about the collection development policy. And based on this, I just need to keep continue to reiterate. Nobody ever suggested that any books would be banned. The reason that the meeting occurred in the first place was because it was discovered that some politically inflammatory books were being promoted online along with a whole host of children's titles. And it seems that that might have been unintentional, but it caused us to examine the collection development policy a little more closely. And what we'd like to do is to ensure that although all books can be available in the library, we wouldn't have inflammatory subjects concealed with the uncontroversial material in the children's section. And we also would make sure that if we had a political spectrum of topics that were made available, that there was an entire spectrum available as opposed to what it looks like now through some investigation. You only have a very narrow portion of the spectrum available in the library. So some of the subject matters that we didn't feel it was appropriate for the library to be presenting children with, in particular, if the parents want to go get books and present it to their kids, that's fine, are topics such as gender identity, attribution of blame, or tendency to oppress oppress others based upon the child's race or sex.
Mr. Mello? Unfortunately, your your two minutes is up. Thank you.
I did send the documents over to you, Ron, so you do have them for your consideration when you have your meeting later. So everything that was that I just mentioned has actually been already submitted.
Yes, thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom wants to speak? Okay. Anyone in the room who hasn't spoken yet wishes?
Hi, my name is Rafa Delson, 400 Lincoln Avenue, North Titan. First of all, I'd like to thank the trustees for presenting this meeting. I think it's very essential that we are able to talk about differences in opinion and also share our knowledge and and also share the importance of having a public library. I also agree with the majority of the people in the audience who say that we shouldn't ban books. As I have a literature background, I have a PhD in French literature. So I am very aware of all the intricacies of language that especially young children can absorb and can read. And there is no difference between, let's say, a minor going to a bar and being rejected an alcoholic drink. Also, a minor going to a convenience store and trying to purchase cigarettes. I don't see a difference between that and a minor, particularly a prepubescent child, having access to literature that is filled with sexually graphic materials, and I've seen them. As I said, I don't have any problems with everyone having access to books, but I think in our public library, there should be a specific section relegated or reserved specifically to prepubescent children. Books, I'm sorry, books that prepubescent kids should not be allowed to have access to unless they're unless they're accompanied by their parents, and the parents should be able to access them for them. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else before we close public comment? Okay, seeing none and no one on on Zoom. And public comment is concluded. I had some remarks that actually I planned to say at the beginning, but they are just as well said now. It's gratifying to see so many people here. It's rare that we have people at a trustee's meeting for public comments, so it's very gratifying and I think it speaks well to the level of interest in this important topic. We're not unique in the challenges that we face faced with regards to the library collections policy. Despite some of the differences that we heard this evening, I trust that we all stand on the same on the common ground of making this town and the library the best that they can be. So our update, our agenda this afternoon includes an update on the transformation of the 19th century Smith Memorial Hall into a 21st century library for the residents of Dayton. I hope many of you will remain to hear the exciting progress that we, it's already been made on that project. Again, thank you all very much. One comment that I'll, for those who are leaving, for those who've seen the plans for Smith Memorial Hall, at one end of the of the hall is a stage on which the children's services. So the library has been in the basement at the Carnegie Building and the basement over here at Town Hall will actually be up on a stage. And the teens, young adult section, at the end of all. And I'd like to thank, and the folks can help me to think this through, but I'd like to see the teen services, young adult services on one end and the children on the other as bookends for the library. And so with that, we'll continue with the rest of our agenda this evening. Again, thank you all very much for coming this evening. Welcome to stay. And part of the participate in the meeting, or I'm sorry, listen during the meeting. With that, our next agenda item, Jocelyn, is the talk about policies. So I think if it's not, doesn't feel rude to those in the audience, I'm going to find it easier to perhaps just to turn this table so that I can see my colleagues on the trustees as much as the audience. It doesn't feel like we're talking to you because I'll get into that habit of feeling like I'm meeting talk to you. So we're just going to take a brief recess here to rearrange the table. Let me solve my back to some people. I apologize for that. Just be. Two minutes may not have seemed like enough. And I, you know, I started with that, not knowing the number of people who might speak.
Well, I think that's a good lump of time because sometimes people start and they just kind of controlling and they reiterate things. So they know what they want to say and it's going to get done.
I don't know if you had a chance to read this draft, if you had.
The one on public comment, yes, I did.
And as well as what I read, the outset was pretty much what I had have in the draft.
I think it's good that we've got a policy now. You can follow that.
Yeah, it's a it's a draft. I would I would just I would recommend. You know, the two of you take a deeper look at it and we can at our next meeting. Perhaps finalize it. I think that makes sense. I don't think there was anything specific that I, well. I did want to, I guess we can keep this in. It may not even be in your draft, but I had the notion of a signup sheet. For people who are coming into the room and I I suggested we take that out. I think it's just too complicated, particularly with hybrid meetings. People who and and people who arrived late. So I think this went very smooth in terms of the people who are speaking and. So I would, I think we'll take out that signup sheet. We I I got this from some research that Jocelyn had done with the.
Do you want to keep it out? Because obviously this was a group of people. Not everyone wanted to speak, but if everyone here did want to speak. Then you probably should have had a sign up sheet because you have, you know, a lot of people. So it's something just. I mean, it's not going to hurt it either way.
We can keep it in because it's not a requirement. It's just maybe at the discretion of the chair to do that. Otherwise, let's just if you're okay with it, we'll just hold it till the next meeting for
Sounds good.
For discussion and vote. We have some unfinished business from our prior meeting with regards to the the acceptable use policy. And did a fine job of summarizing some of our discussion there. And take a look at that. We're doing the laptop policy. Okay, that's different from that. And you gave it back to us for the meeting. No, it's in here, right? So thoughts about this are from our last meeting. We had some comments about it.
I think it's pretty comprehensive.
Yeah, I think we had a pretty thorough discussion at the last meeting. Just wanted to come back to this to make sure that it's with with the time between meetings to have looked at it. Something that I recall, Jocelyn, please jump in if you felt it was something that you thought that we, the trustees, had a particular concern with that we'd want to revisit.
Is, did you not need to define the library card in standing?
Yeah. I think we the acceptable use policy came up because of its reference in these documents and that's what we're going to deal with next, next, next time. We are so I'll entertain a motion to approve the laptop borrowing program policy as presented.
I move that we accept the Dayton Public Library Laptop Borrowing Program as is.
Reader, Rujia, I second.
Okay. Any further discussion? We'll vote. Ron O'Connor, I.
Anne Maitzen, I.
Reader, Rujia, I.
Good. Good job, Jocelyn, as always. Next item is the so I'll go up to the podium for this. As Mr. Mellow indicated, it marks the I, library director Tavares and town administrator. That with Mr. Galucci, Mr. Mellow and Mr. Woods in December. And so I'm going to read into the record the notes from that library policy meeting that were presented at the meeting by Mr. Mellow, Mr. Luci and Mr. Woods. So the recommended here's document entitled Notes for Policy, Library Policy Meeting Change One, Add the Following Section to the Library Policy. Media available in the library with subject matter related to the following list of themes, topics. May not be made directly available to minor children under the age of eighteen years old. Sexual orientation or gender identity. Attribution of blame, fault, tendency to oppress others, or the need to feel guilt because of one's race or sex. Characterization of law enforcement as criminals. Socialism, Marxism, Communism, totalitarianism. Or similar political systems that are incompatible with and in conflict with the principles of freedom upon which the United States was founded. Controversial medical practices. The materials may also not be displayed amongst children's titles stored in the children's sections. Marketed online amongst children's titles or placed on book lists that are intended to be used by children to aid in making material selections. This restriction includes all media or communication formats, including verbal discussion between library personnel and minor aged. Library patrons. Parents may procure this material and offer to their children at their own discretion in accordance with state and federal law. Change two, remove the following statement from the library collection development policy. So quote, selection of materials for younger residents, younger readers is not restricted by the possibility that young people may obtain materials the parents deem inappropriate, end quote. Change three, add the following collection development policy selection criteria. Diversity of thought. Balance of philosophical and theological views. Change four. Action for the library revision. Quote, the Dayton Public Library attempts to represent all sides of controversial issues as far as availability of space, materials and budget allow. Selection is based on the criteria stated in this policy, end quote. If there is a space limitation and it is defined that there is an imbalance in the representation of perspective. Or on a controversial issue. What is the library's policy for making space? How is material purged, returned to the public, destroyed, moved to a different facility or put into storage? Change five. What happens to gifts and donations that the library determines does not meet the evaluation criteria? If Titan residents donate books, do those books remain in Titan or do they get dispersed into overall library system? So that's those are the topics for discussion at the meeting on December sixteenth. I had some some concerns about a couple of these. And chose to request a legal opinion from town council. And acquired that on January twentieth. I'll tell them to read that letter. A little bit long, but it's important that I read it into the into the record. So a letter on the letterhead of Gay and Gay PC seventy-three Washington Street, P O Box nine eighty-eight, Ton, Massachusetts. Date of January twenty twenty twenty-three via email. To R O'Connor at Dayton dash MA dot gov. Town of Dayton Library, address to Titan, Town of Dayton Public Library Trustees, attention, Ron O'Connor, Chairman. Regarding proposed policy changes, our file seven nine one dash sixteen H. Dear Chairman O'Connor and members of the Board of Trustees of the Dayton Public Library. This office has been requested to review suggested library policy changes that it received from several members of the public. The proposed changes are contained in a document entitled Notes for Library Policy Meeting twelve sixteen twenty-two. Said document contains five suggested changes and this office's legal advice as to each is set forth in this letter. Suggested change one. Change one seeks to establish a restriction under which broad categories of materials may not be made directly available to individuals younger than eighteen. The prohibition even restricts verbal discussion between library personnel and minor aged library patrons. Implying that a person under eighteen would not be allowed to inquire into whether the library has resources covering the restricted subjects. In our opinion, suggested change one is clearly unlawful for reasons which we summarize below. The proposed policy would violate the First Amendment of the United States Constitution under existing and well-established Supreme Court precedents. Access to information is a recognized component of the freedom of speech guaranteed under the First Amendment. The Supreme Court has held that children as well as adults have a constitutional right to information. See Board of Education, Island Trees Union Free School District v. Pico. Four fifty-seven U.S. eight fifty-three, nine eighty-two. Hereafter refused to refer to as Pico. Holding that local school boards may not remove books from school libraries simply because they dislike the ideas contained in those books. See also Brown v. Entertainment Merchants Association, five sixty-four, U.S. seven eighty-six, twenty eleven. Quote-unquote Brown, holding the California statute that which prohibited the sale of violent video games to children. Was an unconstitutional restriction on protected speech. Said right to access information is implicated with respect to library materials. See Pyko cited above. Page two. Strict scrutiny applies to government efforts to restrict access to information or otherwise impede constitutionally protected speech rights based on age. Brown cited above. Therefore, governor, government regulation limiting children's access to information such as library resources. Must be narrowly tailored to serve a compelling government interest. The regulation at issue does not meet said standard. The Supreme Court has specifically held that the government has no legitimate interest under the First Amendment in undertaking an effort to prescribe what shall be orthodox in politics, nationalism, religion, or other matters of opinion. Pico, four fifty-seven U.S. at eight seventy-two citing West Virginia Board of Ed v. Barnett. Three nineteen U.S. at six forty-two. See also, for example, Kingsley International Pictures Corp. versus Regent of University of New York. Three sixty U.S. six eighty-four, nineteen fifty-nine. Holding that a state has no authority to censor film on the ground that the state disagrees with the idea promoted in the film. The proposed regulation does exactly what the Supreme Court has held the government cannot do. It identifies certain disfavored categories of materials, none of which could be categorically deemed obscene as to minors. And puts them out of reach of anyone under eighteen. The Supreme Court has clearly stated that speech, quote, that quote, speech that is neither obscene as to youths nor subject to some other legitimate prescription cannot be suppressed solely to protect the young from ideas or images that a legislative body thinks unsuitable to them. Brown five six four U.S. at seven ninety-five citing Ezra Noch, B. Jacksonville, four twenty-two, U.S. two oh five, two thirteen dash two fourteen, nineteen seventy-five. The vagueness of the policy serves as another basis to deem it unlawful. See Commonwealth v. Abrams, sixty-six, Mass. appellate court, five seventy-six, five eighty-one. Two thousand and six. In cases therein cited, explaining that under the vagueness doctrine. Laws that limit expression protected by the First Amendment. Require, quote, a greater degree of specificity, specificity, end quote. And that the line between what is and isn't prohibited must be, quote, finely drawn, end quote. Although no amount of clarification would rectify the constitutional problems presented by the proposed policy. Because, as indicated above, the library does not have the authority to limit access to the targeted subjects based on age. It is worth pointing out that the policy's lack of specificity and vagueness presents an additional rationale for advising that is unlawful. For the reasons described above, there's no doubt that the proposed regulation would be deemed unconstitutional. In addition to the above, the proposal does not meet state requirements for library policy. Under Mass. General Law, section seven, chapter seventy-eight, section thirty-three. Policies adopted by municipal board of library trustees must be in accordance with standards adopted by the American Library Association. A L.A. Change one is inconsistent with the Library Bill of Rights as adopted by the A L.A. Library Bill of Rights is a set of policies adopted by the A L.A. to serve as a guide for library services. Article five of the Library Bill of Rights states as follows, quote. A person's right to use a library should not be denied or abridged because of origin, age, background, or views, end quote. The proposed policy denies library rights solely on the basis of age. The policy also targets certain ideas and therefore abridges library rights based on, quote-unquote, quote, views. Because the policy discriminates on the basis of age and viewpoint. Violation of in violation of A L.A. standards. Mass. General Law, chapter seventy-eight, section thirty-three prohibits the trustees from adopting it. For the reasons summarized above, our opinion is that change one is not legally permissible. Page three. Suggested change two. Change two seeks to remove the following statement from the library collection development policy. Quote, selection of materials for younger readers is not restricted by the possibility that young people may obtain materials that their parents deem inappropriate, end quote. We advise against deleting said sentence as the sentence is consistent with constitutional principles. And A L.A. standards. Removing said sentence implies that the library may begin taking parental opinions of appropriateness into account when selecting materials. Our concern is that such a change in policy would introduce a means to censor under the guise of parental input. Which would violate constitutional free speech rights. On this free speech grounds, the courts have specifically struck down regulations that permit censorship through a quote heckler's veto, end quote, or quote parental objection, end quote. Sun v. City of Wichita Falls, Texas, one twenty-one Federal Supplement Second. Five thirty, North District, Texas, two thousand. overturning a regulation that would permit members of the public to petition to have books removed from a public library. See also Brown, five sixty-four, U.S. eight oh three, two thousand and eleven. Rejecting the argument that protected speech may be curtailed as to youths in aid of parental authority. The A L.A. advises that its policy supporting access to library materials for patrons of all ages means that libraries cannot assume the role of parents. And that only a child's parent or guardian, not guardian, not other parents, have the right to determine their own child's access to materials. See American Library Association, access to library resources and services for minors. An interpretation of the Library Bill of Rights available at www dot A L.A. dot org. For the above reasons, in our opinion, removing the sentence from the library policy presents legal issues that are avoided by leaving said sentence as is. Suggested changes three and four have no legal, we have no legal input as to proposed changes three and four. Suggested change five. Under change five, questions are presented as to what happens to gifts and donations when the that the library determines to not meet the evaluation criteria. The answer to this question is that the Board of Trustees has discretion as to whether to accept a gift or donation. If a gift or donation does not meet its standards, then the board has the discretion to decline to accept the gift. Additional considerations, the trustees retain sole discretion as to whether to adopt any changes to library policy. See Mass. General Law, chapter seventy-eight, section thirty-three. Identifying the Board of Trustees as the body that creates policy for these. identifying the Board of Trustees as the body that creates policy for these selection of library material. The trustees have no legal obligation to act with respect to the suggestions that is received as any proposed policy should be adopted only if the trustees determine in their discretion that such policy is advisable in the interest of managing the Dyton Public Library. Page four. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this legal advice. Please contact this office if we may be of additional assistance. Respectfully, David T Gay Esquire, Town Council, Town of Dyton, Matthew J Costa Esquire, um, with a courtesy cotton to Michael Mullen, Town Administrator, Town of Dyton via email, and to Jocelyn Tavares, Library Director via email. So, um, that's the opinion of Town Council that we obtained on Friday. And I have, uh, other items I would like to read into the record, uh, and I'll invite, um, my colleagues if they uh, if at some point to um, make a motion to accept those doc, said documents as having been read. I do believe it's important, um, to read the, the Library Bill of Rights uh, from the American Library Association as, as indicated in Town Council's, um, letter that, according to Mass General Lodge, chapter seventy eight, section thirty three, we are bound by the, um, American Library Association standards, which are stated here in the Library Bill of Rights. The, and this was much shorter than the much shorter than the, uh, Town Council's letter. The American Library Association affirms that all libraries are forms for information and ideas, and the following basic policies should guide their services. Books and other library resources should be provided for the interest, information, and enlightenment of all people in the community the library serves. Materials should not be excluded because of the origin, background, or views of those continuing, contributing to their creation. Libraries should provide materials and information presenting all points of view on current and historical issues. Materials should be, should be, should not be prescribed or removed because of partisan or doctrinal disapproval. Number three, libraries should challenge censorship and the fulfillment of their responsibility to provide information and enlightenment. Item four. Libraries should cooperate with all persons and groups concerned with raising, concerned with resisting abridgement of free expression and free access to ideas. Item five, a person's right to use a library should not be denied or abridged because of origin, age, background, or views. Item six, libraries which make exhibit spaces and meeting rooms available to the public they serve should make such facilities available on an equitable basis regardless of the beliefs or affiliations of individuals or groups requesting their use. Item seven, all people regardless of origin, age, background, or views possess a right to privacy and confidentiality in their library use. Libraries should advocate for, educate about and protect people's privacy safeguarding all library use data, including personally identifiable information. Adopted June nineteen nineteen thirty nine by the American Library Association Council, various revisions, the most recent of which was January of twenty nineteen, with, um, the inclusion of age reaffirmed on January twenty three nineteen ninety six. And this last statement here, although the articles of the Library Bill of Rights are unambiguous statements of basic principles that should be, that should govern the service of all libraries. Questions do arise concerning application of these principles to specific library practices. See the documents designated by the Intellectual Freedom Committee as interpretations of the Library Bill of Rights. There's a citation for that. There is, um, also a American Libraries Education document which, um, provides an interpretation of access to library resources and services for minors and interpretation of the Library Bill of Rights, which I could read now, or we could just agree to add this to the record of the meeting. It's your pleasure. Like, so it's about a page and a half.
Read it, read it.
Okay. I will do so. Access to library resources and services for minors and interpretation of the Library Bill of Rights. And where am I going to? The American Library Association supports equal and equitable access to all library resources and services by users of all ages. Library policies and procedures that effectively deny minors equal and equitable access to all library resources and services available to other users is a violation of the American Library Association's Library Bill of Rights. The American Library Association opposes all attempts to restrict access to library services, materials, and facilities based on the age of library users. Article five of the Library Bill of Rights states, "A person's right to use a library should not be denied or abridged because of origin, age, background, or views." The right to use a library includes free access to and unrestricted use of all the services, materials, and facilities the library has to offer. Every restriction on access to and access of library resources based solely on the chronological age, apparent maturity, educational level, literacy skills, emancipatory, or other legal status of users violates Article five. This includes minors who do not have a parent or guardian available to sign a library card application or permission slip. Unaccompanied youth experiencing homelessness should not, should be able to obtain a library card regardless of library policies related to chronicle, chronological age. School and public libraries are charged with the mission of providing services and resources to meet the diverse first and informational needs of the communities they serve. Services, materials, and facilities that fulfill the needs and interests of library users at different stages and their personal development are necessary part of providing library services and should be determined on an individual basis. Equitable access to all library resources and services should not be abridged based on chronological age, apparent maturity, educational level, literacy skills, legal status, or through restrictive scheduling and use policies. Libraries should not limit the selection and development of library resources simply because minors will have access to them. A library's failure to acquire materials on the grounds that minors may be able to access those materials diminishes the credibility of the library in the community and restricts access for all library users. Children and young adults unquestionably possess First Amendment rights, including the right to receive information through the library in print, sound, images, data, social media, online applications, games, technologies, programming, and other formats. Constitutionally protected speech cannot be suppressed solely or to protect children or young adults from ideas or images a legislative body believes to be unstable, unsuitable for them. Libraries and their library governing bodies should not resort to age restrictions in an effort to avoid actual or particip- anticipated objections because only a court of law can determine whether or not content is constitutionally protected. Article six of the Library Bill of Rights states, quote, "All people regardless of origin, age, background, or views possess a right to privacy and confidentiality in their library use," end quote. This includes students and minors who have a right to be free from any unreasonable intrusion into the surveillance of their lawful library use. The mission, goals, and objectives of libraries cannot authorize libraries and their governing bodies to assume, abrogate, or overrule the rights and responsibilities of parents and guardians. As libraries, as library, quote, libraries and American value states, "We affirm the responsibility and the right of all parents and guardians to guide their own children's use of the library and its resources and services. Libraries and their governing bodies cannot assume the role of parents or the function of parental authority in the private relationship between parent and child. Libraries and their governing bodies shall ensure that only parents and guardians have the right and the responsibility to determine their children's and only their children's access to library resources. Parents and guardians who do not want their children to have access to specific library services, materials, or facilities should so advise their own children. Libraries and governing bodies should not use rating systems to inhibit a minor's access to materials. Libraries and their governing bodies have a legal and professional obligation to ensure that all members of the communities they serve have free and equitable access to a diverse range of library resources and services that is inclusive regardless of content, approach, or format. The principle of library service applies equal to all users, minors as well as adults. Lack of access to information can be harmful to minors. Libraries and their governing bodies must uphold this principle in order to provide adequate and effective service to minors." Have another document, it's a short letter from the Massachusetts Library Association, from the co-chairs of the Massachusetts Library Association, Massachusetts Library Association Intellectual Freedom Social Responsibility Committee, dated January twenty 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 three. Dear members of the Board of Trustees of the Dyton Public Library, the Massachusetts Library Association Intellectual Freedom slash Social Responsibility Committee champions the public's constitutional right to access a broad array of information services and programs. As professionals, librarians rely on policies, advanced education, and local knowledge to create collections, services, and programs that serve their entire community. Individuals must make their own decisions about what, what they read and believe. Patrons and parents have the freedom to determine which library often offerings fit their individual needs. These ideals are noted in the First Amendment and the American Library Association's Library Bill of Rights. Censorship undermines democratic values and institutions. The majority of Americans understand this recent research, understand this recent research by every library institute shows that seventy-five percent of Americans report opposed book banning. A small but loud number of voices are mounting challenges to the freedom to read through the United States, throughout the United States. While the Intellectual Freedom Social Responsibility Committee supports the right to petition, stand against the values of a few being used to limit the intellectual freedom of the many. Signed Andrea Fiorillo and Susan Caulfield, co-chairs of the M L A Intellectual Freedom Social Responsibility Committee. I just comment that, and from what we've heard this evening, this reference in this, this letter from M L A regarding banning books is not in play here. We're certainly thankful for that. So the last item I feel compelled to read, and this is very short, uh, but this is out of the Massachusetts Public Library Trustees Handbook, found on page fifty-two in the section on Intellectual Freedom. It's, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, there's one thing that struck me as particularly important, um, for our discussion this evening, uh, and, and, and future meetings. The role of old public library trustees. Public libraries play a unique role in the preservation of democracy prov- by providing an open, nonjudgmental institution where individuals can pursue their interests and gain an understanding of diverse opinions. Trustees play an essential role in safeguarding the intellectual liberty of the public. And they must recognize, understand, and support freedom of access. The test of a trustee's commitment comes when they are called upon to allow and defend the expression of ideas that may not be in opposition to personal beliefs of right, of right or wrong. I'm gonna read that again. The test of a, of a trustee's commitment comes when they are called upon to allow and defend the expression of ideas that may be in opposition to personal beliefs of right or wrong. Uh, with that, I think I'll conclude. There, there are other documents that, um, will be including in the record of the meeting, and I will mention that, um, by reference that they get documented as part of their libraries, uh, their library minutes. I think I covered them all. It's just that last one that I really wanted to read. And with that, I, um, I thank you both for being partners in this, in this work. You're both new to this and, um, it's an important statement about our obligations, which are, which are found by the rule of law, which is the key, the key message here is that, um, we're fortunate that libraries in Massachusetts and, and nationally have standards that we have to uphold and abide by. And our, our bylaws in particular reference the, the Library Bill of Rights as an important part of, um, our obligations, and they're in statute as well. And that, that provides a frame for us to do our job and to do it well, at the same time, um, respecting, uh, the very important interests of everybody in this community, because that's what we're here for. And I think that's, I'm gonna join you now, we can have a conversation. I, I thank everybody in the room for, um, listening to that. I think it's very important and, and on, on the Zoom platform. Very important documents that it's important for people to realize. Um, the trustees are, are bound by these requirements, these standards. Um, just as other, uh, town departments and institutions, municipal departments and institutions have, um, have standards which they need to abide by and uphold. Um, I'll come back to my statement, um, that I'm pleased that what we heard tonight, um, represents we have common ground in the future. Um, and, and of the Town of Dyton and making sure that how, and the library the best that they can be. With that, let's continue with our deliberations this season. Thank you.
Um, I move that the documents that you read be included in the minutes. Is that correct?
We have a second.
Rita Rojo, I second.
Okay, uh, we have a motion to include the documents that I read be included in the record of the meeting. Um, I think they are by default, but we can do it formally, it's not a bad idea, uh, any discussion of the motion? Okay, then we'll vote, Ron O'Connor, aye.
Anne Miteson, aye.
Rita Rojo, aye.
Okay. So the, the, the minutes will reflect, in the, the, the minutes of the meeting will include the, um, documents that we're discussing this evening, not just those that I just read, but any document that we use will be included in the minutes of the meeting. Um, so the question now is how do we proceed, um, with, with this, you know, critical frame for our work and for our, our discussion? Um, I'll, I'll, I'm, I'm gonna make a suggestion, and I see what you think, that I think we have a lot to do with regards to this issue. Um, we, we received some very valuable input from town residents this evening. And yet I've done a lot of work that I think would be helpful for you to do as well. You may have been doing some work on your own, and I certainly appreciate that, and I suspect you have, but as a group, we haven't done that. And much of what I've read speaks to the importance of trustees being informed. Um, when they are, you know, challenged, when their resources and services are challenged, and we might have been proactive and anticipated this coming, um, we weren't, but I think training and education and understanding and that we're all working from the same place. There's no doubt that what I read this evening is, is representative of what we need, need to know and what we need to work from. Um, but my suggestion is that we take some time over the next month until our February meeting to, um, I've met with Jocelyn yesterday. Uh, we started putting together a list of resources, materials that will be, um, we think will be helpful as part of that training effort. There are a couple of videos online from, um, a couple of entities that, that I've, that I've watched recently, they're about an hour long, but they helped to, again, helped to frame this in a way that, um, that, that will allow our deliberations and final decisions on amending our policy if needed. It'd be important to do that. Um, there's also a resource that the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, I believe they have it, Jocelyn, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe Mara Didi is available to consult with us if needed, that we could have her attend a meeting by Zoom and, and offer her guidance. Um, but that would, that would be my suggestion is that we, um, if you had specific comments with regards to the comments we received this evening, um, certainly let's, let's talk about them now if you'd like. Uh, I, I can start. Again, I've already said it, I was, it's, I think we're, we're on this common ground and this, you know, general agreement, or that this isn't about book banning, we've heard that from, from day one, from, from these folks and to their credit, that's, I think we're, we're, we're- From, from these folks and to their credit, that's, I think we're, we're, we've run into some, an obstacle here with regards to some of their recommendations. Legal obstacles to that. And yet I think we can continue the conversation among us and invite public comment at the next meeting as well. To continue the conversation, to get to a place where you know, we're, we're all of the same mind, or we've found some suitable ground, so I'll stop there.
Wanna set the date for the next meeting?
I think that would be good.
We're gonna go on the Thursdays, Thursday.
And I would say that the week of the, is it the twentieth? Thinking about a month from today, because you've got a lot to do, I, I may suggest that we, we actually have
Thursday is like a week away, it's on the third.
It'll be the first Thursday. Thinking to the twenty-third. It's about a month from today.
Yeah.
Might be a book group on the twenty-third. Yeah, well, I think anytime that week would be good. Yeah. Yeah, and so we'll, Jocelyn started a list with me on some topics, materials. United for Libraries has several resources that I've read and American Library Association, of course, I think I was going to read this evening, but it's three pages and I'd love to read, it's the freedom of read, freedom to read statement. And again, I think these are, this, I, I have to, I wanna let the two of you talk, but I, I'm grateful for the challenge to our resources because it's, it's helping us to be better. And I, I think that's, that's what we're about, you know, improving what we, what we do here, respecting all voices on, on what we do, and I think it's, it's a wonderful thing that we've received this feedback on what we're doing. This also helps us take a deeper dive into some of the guiding principles of who we are and what we do and why we do it. Go ahead, two of you have anything else to add?
I was just gonna say, I really, I'm familiar, I was familiar with a couple of things that you read, but I was really it's like, is there more, that's like, this is my favorite bedtime stories. Because I really believe in First Amendment rights. And the library should be a place of all kind of books, as one of the speakers said. She doesn't like killing and she doesn't like cooking, so she doesn't read murder mysteries or cookbooks. But there are other books in the library that she does like to read. And I think that's one way of looking at it, there are a lot of books in the library philosophically that I want nothing to do with. They scare me and they hearken back to terrible times, but they're there in the library for a reason. So we never go there again. But I'm not forced to read them, I can read murder mysteries and cookbooks because I, that's what I wanna read. And people talked, spoke a lot about the role of parents. And it is the role of parents to know what their kids are reading and what their kids are doing. Sometimes it's, I used to live across the street from a library. And I saw lots of people drop their kids off as a sort of a free babysitting. But that's, unless you talk with your kids about what kind of books do you read at the library, oh, what did you check out, let's talk about it. You don't know what your kids may be doing, and I'm afraid sometimes there's too much of that going on. People are awfully busy in today's society. But that's one of the things that we would encourage, as I think almost everybody said, as parents, be more involved with their kids.
I agree with that, I taught for thirty-seven years, and that's one of the most important things. I taught in a middle school. And parents were very concerned about their children. And then they'd send them off to the high school. And it's like it was almost like they ignored the kids, and sometimes that's where they really got into trouble. You know, so I, I'm in agreement that, you know, parents should be you know, guiding their children.
Recognizing that that may be challenging for some parents to do, to make sure some of the, the other determinants of their lives. I don't know, probably either of you know that I was on the Dyton Elementary School PTO. For several years, an officer of the PTO in Dyton. The only dad on the, on the PTO officers. And it was, it was always a challenge to get parent involvement, it's, you know, that's come to book, come to book, book fairs and, but I think we did good things there and your comments about high school and we, my wife and I went to every parent teacher conference regardless, right into high school. Whether our daughter liked it or not, I think she actually welcomed it because we always got good feedback when she was doing, but that, that kind of parent and family engagement in the lives of children is so critical, and that's, you know, an important thing that came up this evening for me is how important that is, and the library has a role in helping to reinforce that and to work, partner with others in the community.
And to work in partners with the, with the parents.
Yeah, so I think we're in a good place for now. Again, we'll, we'll, Jocelyn and I will kind of push out this training program for us. And we will meet again, see back to your, should we choose a date? So Jocelyn, do you have
Week of the twentieth, you're gonna look, I mean, that
So, I mean, we're the week of the twentieth, February twentieth, I think it starts, is that, is on a Monday, the twentieth, I think. I think it is.
Yeah, Monday is Presidents' Day.
Monday is Presidents' Day.
That's school vacation week. So it starts on the twenty-third, I have got my supposedly my phone has a calendar. All right, well, I'll trust you, Jocelyn, to find us, here we go. If either one of you had texted me and said, so we all said for tonight, I was gonna say, what's tonight? Yeah, the week of the twentieth, so that's Presidents' Day, right, school vacation week, Ash Wednesday, all these things come up, but, so Presidents' Day would be out. Maybe Jocelyn, if you could find something on the twenty-first. Maybe, that would be good, our, our schedules are pretty open in terms of time of day.
I think I'm above with the book group, so.
Yeah.
I could miss if need be.
I think most of this meeting will be discussion of what we've learned from the training and then seeing how we can apply that to what we've heard this evening and reviewing our collection development policy with regards to that. Got a lot, a lot to unpack. So
Gotta do our homework.
You know, I think, I think the, the collection development policy as it was created and updated last year certainly is based on sound principles, we talked about this evening, but there may be, you know, places where we can, some adjustments. For the record, I can, I can note that a couple of comments that we received by email, one of which was with regards to the the lack of ways, the lack of a way to communicate by email with members of the trustees has been resolved. The town webpage now has our email addresses. We'll be talking later in the agenda actually about how to make sure that that's used effectively within our team and with Jocelyn, but we do finally have that. And we, we changed the designation of the Instagram page from one that references youth to be all-inclusive in its name. So we're, those are easy, easy, low-hanging fruit for us, we realized that that's minor accomplishment, but we, we did that largely, you know, for, they were good comments, we well-received and we acted on those as quickly as we could. And we'll do so with other, some of these other things. I believe with, at our next meeting, we can, we can address them. It's just for formality, we'll just take in a, I'll take a motion to postpone or continue discussion at the next meeting, I don't know if we need to do that formally, but let's do it anyway. So I'll entertain a motion that we continue the conversation regarding collection development policy to our next meeting, before which we will have a opportunity to become better informed with regards to the issues at hand.
Reader Rujio, I make a motion that we postpone the collection development policy till our next meeting.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We've already had it, so, all right, then we'll vote. All in favor, say aye, Ron O'Connor, aye.
Anne Miteson, aye.
Reader Rujio, aye.
Okay, thank you. I'll thought that next time. On the agenda.
Update on two oh seven.
Update on two oh seven Main Street. So we've had some meetings of the building city, met, we, we met with the historical commission, a very nice letter from Pat Gales from Chair of the Dyton Historical Commission. You may have seen that, which we needed for our meeting with the Community Preservation Committee, we had a very good meeting with them as well. So things are moving ahead. And the progress is being made on the building, I'm going to turn it over to Jocelyn because she's very much involved in the day-to-day and this is, this is a big deal, so she's, she's really excited about this as we are, and I, I could talk a lot more about it, but I got my, my bookends thing for the the two ends of the library, and so go ahead.
Yes, we are we got support from the historical commission, as you said. And we have presented to the CPSC commission as well, so I feel that first step to try to get funding, this is the future work. I just want to say that I'm also working on a couple of events to get more funding and to bring some of the costs that will take to renovate the building lately, especially space. And I'm looking for more options for funding because there, there's a lot of things to do, so a few of those deadlines are in February, one is next week, and there's cultural council, facilities going next, toward the end of facilities fund is next week, and then an ALA going up actually is at the end of February for accessibility, so we're looking at as ways to bring of accessibility into the building, which may include, include a ramp, but near a stage to make that fully accessible. For, that's primarily for kids, people who never had a school library. As well as other things like helping with furniture that's accessible and making sure that we provide services to all people, all ages. But that's pretty much it, they've been replaced, they've started replacing the siding and the insulation of the building and working on windows and evaluating the, the shell of buildings. Actually see it happening.
Is the church out of there now total?
I believe if they're not completely out, their lease term is
End of the month, yeah. Yeah. Sign is still there, I think we would take the sign down as soon as they were out.
Yeah, that's true.
So last time I was there, sign was out. One question occurred to me, they're taking off all the old cedar shingles, right? I, I assume sadly they're discarding them. But there, there may very well be somebody who has great repurposing skills for cedar shingles who could do something very crafty with those. And so we just check with Jim Aguirre and see if this way, if there's hundreds of them, I'm sure, but I, I think it would be nice to have that rather than or that they can be repurposed, they did some research, but they can be repurposed into mulch, so it's just a, or they could be made into some craft item. So all kinds of things, if you go on Pinterest, that people can do with old cedar shingles, so I
Some people used to paint on them, I think.
Yeah.
A lot of things you can do craft, but is that something that could restore, might even
Yeah, my wife had suggested the Bristol Plymouth.
Yeah, exactly.
Tech school, like
Who knows what they could make out of them?
Or the Aggie school, could you Yeah.
Someone on the building committee mentioned that they might be original to the building. I'm not
Wow.
So, one other thing about the new space, were you, were you with the historical commission?
No.
No, so I, I had the story to tell and I was so excited about the story, I actually forgot to introduce our helpers, Holly and Joe. Interesting story is that in the, the Smith Memorial Hall was built in eighteen eighty-nine. And five years later, the Dyton Free Library was created with funds from the state, I think it was six hundred dollars to create the Dyton Free Library in eighteen ninety-four. In eighteen ninety-five, town meeting approved the use of, the, the use of a section of this building, Old Town Hall for the library, and that space is what is now the restroom in this building, but that used to be the first Dyton Free Library in nineteen eighty-five. And I shared with the historical commission that imagine those first trustees in that room. Knowing that down the street there was this beautiful palace in the Smith Memorial Hall, and if only they could have a building that grand, they would be so excited. Here we are over a hundred years later and it's going to happen. So that's kind of neat.
It is.
All right, any questions for Jocelyn, I'm co-chair of the Library Building Committee with Kent Chico, so any questions for Jocelyn or me about how things are going, what the next steps are, it's, I think we're, you know, proceeding, proceeding well, I think the timeline that I keep hearing is the word, to my response to it, because I'm so excited about this, like, end of twenty twenty-four. It seems so long. I'm
It's not, if you, I mean, if you think, if you, just to put it in perspective, the beginning of COVID was when?
Twenty twenty.
And how many years ago was that?
Three, yeah.
So you put it in perspective, that's just a blip.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Jocelyn. Members of the staff who are here and the friends, thank you for all your support for this. So new business is the new town of Dyton trustee emails. So we now have our email addresses. And I think there are two things about that was just to confirm that those are all working for us and I, I know they posted on the town website, Jocelyn, that they've been updated on the library website. Right. Okay. Okay.
You were busy helping me.
Yeah, it would be, it would be good to do that. And I, I don't know if this got into the packet, what I thought about it just before I left is I did recommend some language for, as an automatic reply to any messages that we receive. I think you've seen that, I just didn't know if you had any comments about how we, I, I think the key thing for me with communication to the trustees is that Jocelyn is part of those, you know, at, at the, at the outset makes more sense than for us to receive something and say, you know, we'll send it to Jocelyn, I think it's important for anything that we receive. Can't think of any exception to that, would go to Jocelyn as well, because that's where they're gonna go, and that's what this automatic reply message says that, you know, include her in your messages to the trustees because we'll routinely share those for her awareness, review, and response, so I think it's important that people can communicate with us, I think there's a good point that was raised by by, by others in the community, it's something that's been like, the town family has the capability of doing that, that's, the obstacle was when, you know, ten, twelve years ago Like the town family has the capability of doing that, that's, the obstacle was when, you know, ten, twelve years ago. There was no way to get a town email address and some of us created. Separate ones exclusive for this, but now we're. Part of the official town. System, which I think is great. So does this look okay?
Yeah, I think.
We don't, we don't need to vote on this.
I like the standard.
It is.
Yeah, we don't need to vote on this, it's important to, to be with it. Statistics, anything in, in the interest of time because there's no. Six thirty, can you talk about on the statistics this month?
I don't know, maybe I shouldn't be. One of them was the financial.
Want to come over here and sit? You'll see there. Oh, you got zoomed, it's okay.
Like our financial resource, it, it's called WISE. It's. Remember the other one, but it's basically a place where you can search your stocks, bonds, mutual funds, that sort of package. And that number was a bit. That I was expecting for December unless people were nervous about it. The other place where. I increased was in some of the streaming things. I can't be and the. It could have went up. So, you know, that kind of surprised me because we saw some increase in some other places where. I wasn't. I, that's a long way to go saying.
Be okay with moving on?
I am.
Hey, roll on bills.
It's early in the week. Our schedule for the week.
Around tomorrow, that's better. Around all day.
Basically the usual suspects.
Yeah. Okay. All right, yeah.
You're gonna take.
I can take care of it tomorrow.
But I pay well.
It will be Thursday.
Thursday.
I'm around.
Good.
So much, yeah, I may be, I'm coming to the library actually.
Okay, all right.
All right, next is the F Y twenty four budget.
In your packet, there is a. A presentation. It basically, instead of. In the past, we built from the prior year of what was allocated to each line for each department. We've asked to build from the bottom up. For some of the line items. A lot of information for us as the library, speaking as the library. Is looking back to see how our expenses were for this year, I'm talking like supplies and. Tried to base it on how many. Books we buy in a year and what we need to cover plate, to see how much we use, how many times we have to order certain. How much, how quickly we go through. Toner and so that's kind of the basis that I. Zero base, I looked at our spending for this year, I even compared that. A few years. Because I don't think the COVID years are reflective of. What we're seeing today, we're starting to come. In the past few years, we've reduced our recovery line item. Our recreation line item because we weren't doing the same. But we need to.
One hundred percent.
So public comment is closed?
No, I think it's a. I think. About somewhere is.
Always.
Needs to be.
Okay.
So that's what I was going on.
Right.
I don't know how you want to.
You briefed us on this last time that this was coming.
Right.
And these are the, these are the numbers now.
Those are the numbers.
These are. Things we largely entrust to you as the. Administrator of the library. And is there anything here that you want to flag as?
I did go back because we do have certain statutory obligations to meet. And we are in compliance with the amount that the town has to contribute. To meet our. Requirement and. In, in addition, we're also in compliance with the percentage that we have to contribute for materials. So. We can. I, I, I checked a few times, I, I, I get very nervous to make sure that we are in compliance, so it doesn't affect our.
That, 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 that would have been my only concern if I for going, how sensitive you are to that, so.
Yeah. One thing I know is that. The five one oh six line. Is. The staff with the exception of myself and with our page. And they are in contract negotiations as we speak. So that number does not reflect any. Potential.
Increase.
Increase. That if. Their contract is settled and approved and. That will go to. A town meeting, right, and.
Yeah, okay, no, 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 that's. If you don't find, I'm, I'll be one of the. People that'll be voting on it. That would, you want to put a placeholder in for your staff.
Okay.
And you. Or get an idea, if you get to reach out to one of them. Or. The one who really is the expert on order selection on zero base. Is Peter Kim.
Okay.
I mean. I'm not sure if everyone is aware, Peter is a retired CEO of Marriott International. So he knows a lot of our budgets. And he's helping order help, so you can reach out. I will say this and I'll say this publicly. If you make. The same. Logical. Defense. As you did tonight for your budget. You will get support. You have. Showed in the past, I think all of you have been on, you were there last year. You're not little spenders. You do your due diligence in preparing the budget. And I don't see it being any different this time around.
Thank you.
Because the. Our, I guess, first draft of the budgets are due with the town administrator's office and the town accountant on February first. I'm working for. A vote tonight and I, I have the document. If you want to see it in its entirety. So your packet has the defense and.
Do we, do we, we have two copies of the same thing?
Yeah, this is like the traditional budget that you're accustomed to seeing with our line items. It's broken down into the.
Our handout is two, two identical pages. I didn't know.
You cut line items on the second page.
Yeah, mine's not. Yeah, mine has two pages the same, it was a test, I know.
You're paying attention.
You passed.
So this one has two pages the same too.
Yeah. I did that well, didn't I? So this is the typical presentation. And it does need to be signed by the complete board voted if you're in agreement or approval. You need us to do that tonight.
I would need.
Okay, that's fine.
An approval tonight if you're.
That's fine. Quick questions.
Sure.
As one said. Does this include like if you're anticipating them to get? A raise or is that?
I didn't include it, that's the. If we go by July first and there's no. Agreement, there's no contract in place, typically in the past. We would have to include it at a special town meeting in order to meet those obligations and the money would be. Everything would be at that time. I don't know, I'm not privy to the negotiations to know how they're going, but. I thought the instruction was to keep it. The same rate. But I'm.
So that, that may change.
That might change, right.
And stamps went up yesterday.
Yeah, I know, I was like, I need to like really look at.
Yeah, they did.
All right, I'll. I'll entertain a motion to approve the. F Y twenty four budget as presented.
I second a motion.
And ask for motion because I chair can't make motions.
You asked for motion, sorry. I so move.
Answer your second.
I second Reader Arusha.
Yeah, motion made and seconded to approve the F Y twenty four budget as presented. Any discussion? Okay, favor, say aye, Ronald O'Connor, aye.
And Mike's an aye, Reader Arusha, aye.
Motion passes, you want us each to sign this, right?
Yes.
We need to date it. Can't hurt to date it, okay.
You need a pen.
I brought a black pen today instead of my, I've got my.
Supposed to use black because I used.
No, well, black or blue, but they don't let me use my purple.
Blue is great because. You can tell it's not a photocopy.
There you go.
Yeah, you should.
Thank you, thank you, Jocelyn.
Thanks, Jocelyn.
We had. One item of, next item of new business is the conflict of interest training.
With Tom Clark's office has been in touch with the staff about. Every, every year I would have to sign an acknowledgement that we received the documents and at two years we have to take the online training. And we're in the online training year. I know.
I just did it.
You just, so we are all set, but.
Okay.
I mean. Well, I, I know where to find the acknowledgement forms if we want to work together to get that into the town clerk. Just so that all his. Parents are mad. I think you're probably within the two years.
I think so.
Because this is only your second.
Let me check with Mark.
We can, yeah.
Okay.
That acknowledgement and.
I just. I just did it, so I'll bring the, I'll bring my certificates tomorrow, because you can do the, you can do the acknowledgements. Form online as well.
Yes, Marcus put, the town clerk has everything on there, on the town website, on his page, so it's very easy to.
Oh, so I, I found her on the training page for the. Yeah, he was also there, I did both.
Yeah, no, I, I'm pretty sure he has everything.
So you don't need the certificate because I can bring it on Thursday, that would help.
I think you're probably okay, but it wouldn't be.
Okay, I'll just bring it.
As much as anything. And that would lead, I know, this was like the bouncing off point to one of the other big requirements, just to keep in mind is. When they distribute the open meeting law materials. So if. And if you would like. There's been a lot of recent discussion about training and webinars pertaining to how that works, if you want me to send some of that along.
Yeah, there's a couple of trainings happening in February, I registered for one. It's on the twenty third, because we're on one on the seventh. But there's also webinars that have been stored and saved, these are live ones. If you, if you take the training online, it sounds like neither one of you need to do that right now, or if you do, just a word of caution, when you complete it, you. Then you go back and you check, happened to be, I completed it and then it said I was like still in progress. And I just refreshed my screen and it said I was done, but. I've been through too many of those where it's, you, you're done and then you've got to go all the way back. Funny story is this, you know, the training can probably take thirty minutes, twenty, fifty. And when I was working, it was like maybe a fifteen minute training and we'd actually time you and say how long it took you to complete it and I went through the whole thing. Completed it, but it didn't record it in my transcript, so I had to retake it, but I just clicked through all the slides. Oh, it's being recorded, isn't it? Completed in fifteen seconds, I had already completed it. Glitch in the system, all right, so, yeah, just, you know, reminder about training and this, in this context, I think it's fair to bring up. More than just the complex of interest training, but we had talked about. As we have in the past about doing the, the trustees deeper dive trainings. And they're available online and. Where there is a deeper dive on the. Collections development policies and so that. That's one that we'll just put on our list. Right, in fact, that one's available online to, but I think, you know, Jocelyn's gonna. Put together the, the, the training program for us so that we can continue our work of. You know, this, this, this current situation is, is so instructive and helpful just in terms of. You know, the, the nature of the comments and concerns, but also just a reminder of our obligation to stay informed in current and there's a lot happening. In the collection development space, but also elsewhere where we. I've been trustee for fifteen years and it's good for me to get refreshed on some of these things that I might have paid more attention to earlier on. Okay. We, we, we're working on a scheduled February meeting.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Uh. Is there an update from friends, we have friends in the room, so is there an update? Okay, Mark put you on the spot, appreciate you being here and all you do with friends, Zach, so. And so this personnel item. On the procedure for a department has a non-union evaluation, if we all received the email from Karen. Deadline for us to send our comments to Karen Brady is. It's Thursday, I believe. Thank you. And.
Thank you.
The, the, what, the, the process now. A little bit different than we, we have done in the past is, we have done in the past is. These will get sent to Karen, she will compile them. And then create a compilation, I think the key to that is that our individual valuations will not. See a public record, if I understand correctly, whereas in the past, they may have been used in our decorations of a meeting, so. Can we get that in if you haven't already? To Karen, she'll do the compilation and then at our next. At our next meeting, we'll. Do the. Evaluation, which I think that's why I chose that week is so that. Because twenty, I think it's due. The end of that week, do that week, so that's why I think it'd be important for us to meet that week. With, you know, the. Agenda items could very well be the performance evaluation and the collection development policy. And anything else that's time sensitive. Do you want to give, do attention to both? Those will be.
This will have to pass on to, to. Do Thursday?
I'm, I'm pretty sure that's with the. Week, yes. Did they, did they, I thought they. I know they had extended it, but most recent message from Karen was the twenty sixth, that's what I had in my head. But I could be wrong, I know it's like after.
You're probably right, I'm just.
It's the twenty sixth.
Oh, okay.
Town Hall's not open.
The review process is the twenty third. Get the work due on the twenty sixth, you're correct.
So our individual evaluations are due on the twenty sixth, Karen, by closing business. Think that can be done electronically. Think that can be done electronically. It's become a little public record if we do that. I don't think they are, but the, if you can handle it, it's probably better. Okay. Upcoming programs. Um, hey, Jocelyn, I'll let you take this.
The historical commission program about the historic buildings of Dayton. One is. The essential oils program is also rescheduled. It's in. At the beginning of April and it'll be here at the town hall as well. This will lead sixty-one other massive pieces libraries to offer. A employment workshop for. Job seekers who are over the age of fifty and they're obviously virtual with all of us together, but. There's a morning session for those who have that. That we agree. The first and the third Wednesdays of the month at nine thirty to eleven thirty. There is also evening sessions that are meeting. Second, fourth Wednesday at the front from six to eight. Each meeting, there's a new topic for each. And it's repeated, whatever happens in the morning, there will be a repeated session in the evening. And we're about one and a half sessions in, um, the next evening session is tomorrow night. And the feedback has been very positive. It's set up in a way to accommodate. Anyone's needs, um, so there were people who. Are trying to leave professional work or they've been consultants. There are people who are actively unemployed and seeking work. There are people who are. They just want to change in their career and don't know where to begin. Or they want to go back, they've been out of the job force for some time. And each of those needs are being addressed. And it's been a great networking opportunity for the participants who are involved. In the workshop and it it's a very positive experience and I, you know, I. I'm happy with the feedback and, um.
Someone was on Facebook that I'm a friend with and he's giving positive feedback.
Yeah.
On Facebook.
And it was, um, because we. There's like sixty of us, the cost of participation is very affordable to provide that kind of breadth and breadth of, you know, the. That's been a reason to our, to our patrons, so. That'll be ongoing through June. I can say great things about that. Um, we have a Reiki program in here next Monday night. Our youth services have. Put together, um. February vacation programs, I don't want to put you on the spot, is there anything you want to relay? One of the, um. The Lego, the the virtual, the mindwave, mindwave. But basically it's giving kids. In, um. To complete in this session when someone coming in and leading the group and.
Yeah, it's, um.
Well, like a video game. It's interactive and it sounded really cool and we saw it, we were like, you know, I could. Then we're having a chocolate tasting.
Say that quietly because.
Run once to make sure there's enough chocolates.
Is there, is there a sign up for that registration?
Not yet, I.
Okay.
Not yet.
Yeah, that sounds, that's very fun, this all sounds fun. Programs are really. It's crazy, our work goes into planning them and organizing them, thank you. Get, get the word out, get people here.
Yeah, yeah.
Chocolate tasting, fill the room, it's great.
That'll also be because I don't expect, I'm not the only sweet tooth.
Oh, cool.
Good. Thank you.
Taking a lot of social interaction.
Nice.
Right.
So, okay. The motion to adjourn.
Leader, I make the motion to adjourn, and Mike's in second.
Into adjourn. Vote, call in favor, Ronald Connor, I.
And Mike's and I.
Being adjourned, thank you.